All right. I am going to call to order the monthly, the August meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. So I've done that. The first item here under Call to Order is remote attendance. And we expect none, so I think we can just move right through that. We have a suggestion of moving Business Item A. And so in other words, changing our agenda, so if anybody would like to make a motion to change our agenda, that'd be lovely.
I move to revise the order of the agenda to move New Business Item A, Action to Approve Health and Wellness Facility Design Services, to directly after public comment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, there we go. Now, public comment, here we got some action tonight. Do we have anybody from the public who I see, there's lots of folks out there, but I think I know why pretty much everybody's here. Am I missing anybody? Anybody want to tell us something before we move on to our next item? Okay, so our next item is new staff introductions.
We have staff here that's gonna introduce, I think Kyle's up first, and Joe.
I'm Kyle, I'm an athletic supervisor.
You guys come up to the table.
Oh, yeah.
We want to get everyone on camera.
Have a seat, relax, tell us the whole story.
All right. I'm Kyle, I'm the athletic supervisor. This is Joe Manning, he's our new athletics coordinator. He started officially on August 26th with us, still been doing a lot of camp stuff, so we're still working on getting him more comfortable. Greg's last day is the 13th, and we'll be rolling on with Joe.
Yeah, for those that don't know, Greg is retiring, so that's why Greg is leaving us, so. Joe, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, everyone, it's nice to meet you. My name is Joe Manning, I am, as Kyle said, the new athletics coordinator for the Park District. A little background on myself, I am a recent University of Illinois alum. I graduated with my undergrad in summer of 2020, and I, after doing an internship with the Park District actually, so thank you all for helping me with that. And then I will also be continuing on to get my masters currently as well, so that is a little bit to juggle with the position, but I definitely feel strongly about my ability to handle everything, and I feel strongly that this is the right place for me to be. The Park District has been a place for me over the past few years that I've worked with our summer camps, with our nature day camps, our Camp Fresh Sports Camp, so this has really been a home for me, and I'm happy to continue my existence here with the Park District.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Yeah, well, sort of welcome since you've already been. The welcome to your new position, how does that sound to us?
Absolutely, sounds great.
And it always makes us feel good when somebody who's interned with us is, I mean, not that it's a surprise to us, but when you're, when you're willing to come back and work for us, we know that then you've been happy with the people that you've been working with.
I've been beyond happy with the people. The Park District has really become a family for me, so it was really a no-brainer on where to apply when I graduated.
Great, oh, well, that makes us happy. So, we're glad you're onboard in your new position.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Rich is up next, yeah.
Yeah, two guys. Guys, two people.
So I'm Rich McMahon, grounds maintenance supervisor. I have two new employees to introduce tonight. The first one, Alexandria Hild Aleho, worked with us since last year as a mowing seasonal. With Doug Johnson's departure, we had an opening, and fortunately for us, she decided to apply for that full-time job, which she got, obviously. So she's been with us, this is, start of her third week was yesterday, and couldn't be happier to have her on full-time, she's been very reliable, everybody loves working with her, she does a great job, so we're fortunate to have her full-time. Do you want her to talk before I go on to my second one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm Alexandria, everybody calls me Alex mostly. I really liked being here as a seasonal employee, love working outside, and I'm really thankful for this position and look forward to whatever's next. I love Urbana, I'm an Illinois alum as well, and have just remained in town here for the most part, and just love this town and the people who live here.
Wonderful.
Right, would you have an area of specialty, or you just, whoops? Anything that needs to be done, you're...
So, right now, she's been mowing pretty much non-stop.
I am from Moline too, where John Deere's from, so it's kind of funny in that way.
So the plan is, if we ever get back to somewhat normal, is Devin and Alex would be kind of interchangeable grounds maintenance technicians. One person might be mowing, you know, for weeks at a time while the other person is helping the arborist, or helping Georgina, or whatever, and then they can flip-flop, and the other person can mow for a while, and the other person can kind of be the floater. That's the plan, but we're so short of seasonals right now that they've both been mowing non-stop since they started full-time, so hopefully that plan will change at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
But grass out there.
So Devin Ninesinger is our second grounds maintenance addition. As you might know, Joel Hickman left the Park District, which opened up his position. Grant Goff, who I introduced everybody to probably four months ago, back in April, I think, he moved over and took Joel's position, which created a second grounds maintenance technician position opening. And Devin applied and got the job, and he's started full-time the same time as Alex, so this is also his third week, and he's been doing a great job, and he also has been doing nothing but mowing so far, but look forward to getting him involved in other areas when possible, so I'll let Devin speak for himself.
Hi, my name is Devin. I really appreciate the opportunity, thank you. It's really good to be a part of the Park District family. I look forward to getting to know all of you guys over an extended period of time. I moved here seven years ago. From the start that I got here, I've been doing handyman landscaping, building maintenance for residential properties and commercial properties, so this job is ideal, it's right up my alley. I really enjoy it. Everybody here is really nice, I really like the town a lot, and it's, out of all the places I've lived, it's the best town that I've been in so far. But yeah, it's a great opportunity, and I appreciate it a lot.
Wonderful.
Yeah, well, you know, the thing about your jobs is that you make all the rest of us look really good. Parks look great, and even if we're doing a crummy job with the rest of it, people do, "Oh, aren't the parks in Urbana?" Well, of course, they are, because you guys are doing a, doing a super job, so...
Yeah, it's good to have pride of your work at the end of the day, when you get done with a hard day's work.
For sure.
Yeah, and it shows, I mean, I've been following the beds in the parks where I go, so I know, I know that it's been, that it's been a hard year, and there's, but still, they're looking pretty good, considering how few people that you've had to work in, and the kind of weather that you've had to work in, so we're glad to welcome you onboard.
Thank you.
Nice thing about mowing is that for 10 minutes, it looks great.
And it rains in the grass.
But it really has looked good.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you guys. You all, thanks, Rich.
But on my fancy little agenda, it says Suggested Spot for New Business Item A. So I believe that we are in fact going to work on the Farnsworth stuff.
Yep, I think we're ready for Scott, whoever he's ready to...
Scott has 900-page documents.
He's coming up, Nancy, I'll just briefly mention, and then Andy will walk us through, and staff, obviously, this, the big contract for the health and wellness. I think we've talked about it, anticipated, we talked a little about this at the study session, and certainly covered it, the topic at finance study group. So Scott's here from Farnsworth, and Andy can walk us through the proposal.
Sure, I'll just kind of give some background, I think you all are familiar with Scott with the number of presentations he's provided to the board in the past year or so, and Scott was the project lead for Farnsworth for our preliminary design contract, and just as a reminder, that served to provide us those conceptual designs that we have shared with you all in the community, conducted that site analysis for the future health and wellness facility, we held a public meeting, we gathered input to help develop the facilities program, and then Scott and his team helped create many of the materials that were used for our grant applications, as well as assisting with our fundraising. We're, as you may remember from last week, fundraising at this point, we're at $1.6 million in donations, and that goes along with $2.5 million in grant funds from Park, as well as $2.9 million that we have in Park District grant funds from the bond refinance of the 2019 A series bonds, where we had money allocated to Crystal Lake Park and for health and wellness initiatives. We're also anticipating $3 million in the future from DCEO, and we're continuing to work to finalize that agreement. And Scott has worked to refine the scope of services for the contract that we had provided in the board packet tonight, and we are recommending for approval. As a reminder, this is utilizing the construction manager approach, rather than the, what we've done typically, the design bid-build method, and Scott, I think, did a nice job last week, kind of giving some background information on that method. And we also took time in the finance study group last week to go over kind of what we did at the study session with Michael present, and he was very supportive of using that construction manager method.
I just have a question, since I wasn't here last week. We also did something similar when we built this facility, or was it different?
Similar, but different, yep.
We hired somebody as a third party.
Right, but this will be...
Owner's rep, thank you. I couldn't think of them.
Can someone, can you give, somebody give, Meredith, just a brief, yeah?
The quick difference between the owner's rep and this.
The owner's rep was an independent party professional service that worked both with the Park District and with the general contractor, and with the general contractor, you know, they bid on bid day, so it was a single standalone bid. For this project, we're recommending that we go with a construction manager in lieu of both an owner's rep and a general contractor. The construction manager will begin working early on alongside the architect and staff, much like the owner's rep did, but early on, they'll start testing the pricing of some of our, of our different trades, and that helps us get ahead of any uncertainty about fluctuations in pricing. It's also a more collaborative environment between the owner, the architect, and contractors, because they're, they're working, you know, for us as a professional service early on, as opposed to having to have a set price on bid day.
Gotcha, yeah. Okay, thanks.
We did discuss, you know, pros and cons, certainly, but it seemed like everyone thought there was more merit with this approach, with this project.
Yeah, and I, I think you mentioned, this is common, and I've seen it actually, this come up in some other, like in my home community, they're using this construction manager to do some school renovations, so, just, I just couldn't remember what we called it, and I knew we had done something similar, but not for this one, okay.
And I see it, I see it particularly as an advantage because, and especially now that we've got the next grant coming through, there's, there's a lot on these guys' plate, and it will make it easier for them, there'll be less for them to have, because they won't have to spread themselves quite so thin, so I think it's, and I mean, and this is such a big project.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and I think the fluctuating cost of construction materials.
Yeah, especially now...
It'd be nice to have somebody that takes, takes notice of that.
Right, right, and you don't have a sort of one-time drop-dead price.
Yeah, right, that has to carry you months and months till that work is scheduled to go.
Yeah.
I did want to jump in, Nancy called me earlier today, she had a question, I don't know if you noticed, on the front page of the AII document, down below mid-page, it has the title Urbana Indoor Rec and Fitness Center, that was really related more to the park grant, remember, back when we signed those agreements, we talked about different names, just different preferences. What I assured Nancy was, the board has the ability to name the facility, anything they would choose, or if there was a donor, you know, opportunity, so it's just the document title for this, so we certainly have options.
We pitched the name Health and Wellness early on to IDNR when we were applying for the park grant, and they encouraged us to go with something that's more descriptive for what it is, if it's a recreation facility grant. So for the purpose of the grant, that's what we've been calling it, as far as the community goes, all of our fundraising, Health and Wellness is how we think we'll be, continue to be known, pending a large donor coming in and making a name facility.
Yeah, no, my, my concern was just the sort of legal aspect of it.
Yes.
Is that if we've got a document that's calling it the Indoor Recreation and Fitness Center, and yet all our other things are referring to something else, if that just doesn't tie it up, but it doesn't seem to be so, so.
Right.
We can call it, I don't care, whatever.
We even considered, well, maybe we should call it this, and the staff team was, well...
Yeah, I mean, this is...
It's not our favorite name, but I think...
And the park grant does include a portion of the professional services for this contract, so it's good that it's called the same thing as it is in the park grant.
Yeah, yeah, and that was, I just wanted to make sure that it was, that everything was kind of parallel.
Yes, wouldn't come back to bite us later with...
Yeah, yeah, that's all I cared about, we can...
Not getting funds, or whatever.
Yeah.
I do have some pictures to show, I don't know for anybody at home, I know the board's seen a lot of this information before, but I just have a few items, maybe for anybody that's watching down the road to get some more background information. Here, really just showing that buildable area along Washington Street, adjacent to Preston Williams School, and that building area then would take the Prairie North and South softball fields, but it remains within our kind of current athletic complex and our current gym space at Brookins, so we're kind of maintaining that same area in the community. And then we had kind of our most up-to-date floor plans at the moment, obviously, we haven't gotten into full design at this point, and aren't into contract at that level, but this is showing the first floor, where we have our reception area, dedicated space for six offices, and then a conference, and kind of group employee space over here, men's and women's restrooms with showers, multipurpose room, an area dedicated for play space, and then two full-size basketball courts that then could be segmented into four volleyball, or even four junior-sized basketball courts as well, which is basically in effect doubling our current gym space at Brookins. And then moving to the second floor, which is more of the fitness area, we have two group fitness rooms, and then a large fitness equipment room for cardio equipment and strength training, free weights, and then, of course, the elevated walking track.
Andy, Meredith was not here when we talked about that exterior, that bathroom that's...
Has a pump room and...
Yeah, so this is kind of what we're looking at for an application for potential DCEO funds, which would then set us up in the future for a potential AusLAD grant for different site amenities, and more specifically, a spray ground. With recirculating spray grounds, you're required by the state public health to have restrooms, changing, and shower facilities. So we're kind of trying to utilize the opportunity and construction of this facility to set ourselves up potentially down the road for that application, and have some cost savings with both those exterior restrooms, as well as mechanical space that would then serve that spray ground. And then finally, just one of the many renderings that Farnsworth provided, just, not that this is ultimately what the building will look like, but just kind of the nice work that Farnsworth has done, putting together our vision book and potential for what the facility could become, and certainly has been successful in getting funds from grants and donations as well. So getting back into the budget, specifically with this contract, Derek mentioned that we do have funds dedicated from the park grant to fund this contract, and that was in the amount of $375,936, and then the remainder would come from our Park District 2019 A bond money for health and wellness. And then, so tonight, which is similar to when we had a recommendation of award for our Blair AusLAD project, at that time, we did not have our grant documents finalized, we've been awarded the grant, we're just waiting for them to actually be signed and sent to us. We're recommending that the board awards the contract to Farnsworth pending the receipt of those final state-executed grant agreements. So that'll allow us, whenever they're able to send those final documents to us, which we anticipate would probably be in the next month or so, we would then have our, be able to execute our design contract with Farnsworth and could begin work, which one of our first tasks, getting more into schedule, would be what was mentioned with, getting, putting out an RFQ for that construction manager service. And so, you know, assuming that we can get our park grant documentation completed sometime in the next few weeks, I think it may be realistic that by maybe the October board meeting, we could have a recommendation for those services, and then really be able to get into a lot of the design work that's going to lead to potential groundbreaking this spring, and then potential facility completion and move-in summer, early fall of 2023. With that, open up to any questions, or if anyone else had anything they wanted to mention?
It's just been a pleasure working with their team, again, from the very beginning. In fact, when we started working with Farnsworth, it was another project and another client was working with them, and we were just, you know, chiming in some possibilities, and just to see that develop into our own project now, it's just been amazing, and we're very pleased.
And I also want to note that, you know, Farnsworth finished up their scope on our earlier contract a year ago, a long time ago, and they've been so gracious every time we've asked for something to help with this additional grant we're pursuing, or more for fundraising, they've been very happy to help out, and we're, of course, now working with the traffic study, and that, and we're anticipating having a meeting later this month through that, so far, all the news is great on that, but I just want to say how much we appreciate working with Scott and you, it's been fantastic.
Absolutely, and I would add, going on-site visits, taking time away from their own other work, or personal time, just to make sure that anything we would need, or we understood, so it's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you, and if I might add, you guys have been also very awesome to work with, you guys have your ducks in a row, and you know what you're doing, so it's, it's really helped things along, so, well done.
Great.
All right, well, I move to award Design Services for the Indoor Health and Wellness Facility for $589,350, and a 10% contingency, a $58,935 to Farnsworth Group of Champagne, Illinois, pending state-executed grant contracts.
All right, anybody have anything else they want to say? All right, it says that we need a roll call vote, so Roger, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's it, you guys have it.
Thank you very much, looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
It's gonna be great, isn't it? I'm just, yes, this is so terrific.
Excellent.
It kind of makes it...
Thank you, guys.
It's one step closer to real.
Well, we've been waiting for this moment, you know, because you're right, Nancy, that does make it real, and the clock starts tonight, so we're excited.
Oh, man. How do you feel now?
Let's go.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Park District Advisory Committee's report. There wasn't any meeting, so there's no report, so that's a pretty simple thing to do. The next item after that is our consent agenda, and I, my job now is to ask if any of the commissioners wants to remove anything from the consent agenda. All right?
So, I move, yeah, I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, actually, I think I'll take, instead of a discussion, I am going to, to read what is included in this omnibus consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes of the July 13 regular board meeting, we have the monthly reports from administration, planning, and operations, and recreation, we have the action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and we have the approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. All of those are just kind of weirdly worded, aren't they? But those are all the things now that we are accepting, and now we can vote. Ayes and nays is all we need, ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? I don't want. All right, our financial reports are considerably less than usual since Katie's been out here.
Right, as you recall, last month, Katie said you'd be out this month, and she'll pick us up in September, we've done that occasionally, I'll review a couple of months if the office or superintendent is, is not available.
And she just sent me a picture of her, like, feet in the ocean.
Oh, dang. Well, not on her back.
Yeah, right.
You should have waited until we finished.
A little cooler.
Right, um, all right.
I think that brings us to A3. Are we at A3, capital budget?
I think so, I think that's right, capital budget, so Derek and Andy, what have you got to regear us with?
I'll start with domestic hot water replacement. Last week was our week-long closure of the indoor pool, contractor was able to complete the final connections and testing last Friday afternoon, facility reopened yesterday, and things have gone pretty well at this point.
Has anybody taken a hot shower yet, though?
I, I have not.
I have not, but I did turn it on, it was hot, yeah.
Yeah, so this week, they're gonna still be onsite a couple more times to continue to check on the system, make sure it's functioning well, and do any final inspections, and then we'll be ready to close out the project here shortly, but it went pretty smooth.
So why did we have to replace it? I'm sure that it needed replacing, but I'm curious as to why.
So this, you want me to...
Go ahead, yeah.
So, for the last four or five years, we've had lots of concerns about showers being cold and toilets being hot.
What's wrong?
Not a good situation.
So there was definitely, you know, as many moving parts as the old system had, finding and tweaking, we could get it fixed for a while, and then it, something else would go with it, go bad, so this is a new updated system that will...
Did we have to redesign the system? Was it, so it was a matter of a boiler or some...
No, it was a redesign and a whole different system.
Yeah, we worked the same engineering group that helped with the pool pack unit, they helped with the CO2 conversion, and they brought in some experience from working with the university, and the master mixing valve, which is why we're flipping our water, was the thing that was on, on its last leg, and once that goes, you know, we would have been closed for much longer than we had.
Oh, yeah.
And so by having a planned replacement, as it was becoming obsolete, we not only get, avoid that extended closure, but we have a more efficient system as well.
Great, great.
There's still a chance that the mixing valves in the showers will break, and they do, and so we, we've been trying to make sure everybody understands that you might still come in one day and have a cold shower, but, but it shouldn't be all the showers.
Right, yeah, yeah, yes, I suffered with that, with that myself, so I know that it's not much fun, and there'll be a lot of really happy, because are we, will we be able to use the showers, and come back out in the fall? Is that...
Well, so far, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, pretty beat to dump down.
Right.
Okay, anything else we have?
Yeah, on the Phillips roofing bid, we had intended to have a recommendation to the board this month, we did have it out to bid last month, and our bid opening last week, after some more discussions during that bidding period with our insurance contact, we did find out that there was some additional work needed after the bid opening, which was last week, so our insurance contact needs to work with that low-bid contractor, and then ultimately have that agreement that we would then bring to the board, so at this point, it looks like that recommendation will be at next month's board meeting, but in the meantime, we are working to investigate the option for the metal roof or asphalt shingle, checking references with the contractor on any relevant projects for metal and asphalt replacements. The metal roof came in about $100,000 over the shingled roof, which we would have to cover that full cost, insurance claim is only covering the shingled roof replacement. And so, we also had an alternate for the flat roof portion, which is like the rubber membrane, and that's another $20,000, that's outside of the insurance claim as well, so right there, we're talking about $120,000 that we would have to come up with to go to the metal route. Also, as with all of our projects, we want to assign some contingency for any unforeseen issues that happen during the construction period, so we'd probably be looking at coming up with around $150,000 if we wanted to move towards the metal roof. At this point, we're still... At this point, we're still kind of evaluating our budgets to see if that's in the best interest of the district at this point. But we also do want to do our due diligence with the contractor to make sure that we're comfortable with them performing what we believe would be a probably more complicated roofing project with the metal roof itself. Phillips roof isn't just kind of like a single angle down, it has lots of different angles to it, which we just would want to make sure that the contractor is very comfortable and competent to do a metal roof of that nature. So we're, we're still checking on some references for that as well, but we should have more to come next month on that.
Andy, $120,000 on top of what? How much is the shingle?
So the shingle was like $86, $87,000.
It's a significant.
So it's more than double.
So then the metal was like $180,000.
And in terms of lifetimes?
It, it's probably about double the lifetime.
Okay.
Metal is double.
So you get, so you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
It's a good product.
But, you know, we do have some concerns with the Phillips roof layout. I mean, that's, that's a different kind of roof that we've done from previous metal projects as well. So it's just something that we're, we're checking on.
Okay.
Just some background info. When we built the Phillips Center, you know, we had a pretty small budget to try to replace the Thornburn facility, you know, modest. And we were also expanding the nature center and developing Meadowbrook Park. So not unlike our kind of current situation with Crystal Lake and Health and Wellness, so, you know, flexibility gets tighter, you know, as we commit to projects. But going back to the roof, you know, we didn't have a lot of money to make a lot of attractive architectural. So the architects then, at the time Ken Nelson, had this idea of make the roof sort of the interesting thing. Well, I think we've learned since then, that wouldn't be the ideal place to add flare, if you know what I mean? Because it makes it a very unconventional roof. While it looks good, you know, when it's new and functions, there's been a number of other in functional type of situations. And so in retrospect, a simpler roof line is generally better, easier to retrofit. So if we could do it again, I think we'd fix the whole roof line. In fact, I think we looked at that at one point and some of the costs were really expensive. And I think some of our other preliminary metal roof costs were, you know, challenging. So however we end up, ultimately, if we could move toward a, you know, metal roof at some point, that might make sense. But, you know, depending on what we can afford now, so we'll see what staff comes back with. But I wish we could do it again, so I take a lot of responsibility in wishing it were different. But we, we'll have to work with what we have.
It wasn't a bad, it wasn't a bad choice.
And it made sense.
It was not most economical, long-term choice.
It accentuates the three meeting rooms, and that was the concept, uplift and make those rooms feel like they had volume like this space. And so, you know, I got that.
It does look good. It's a, it's a nice looking building.
From the street, it's just from roofing and managing, you know, it's probably, could be, could have been different. But anyway, we're here now and we're dealing with a hail situation and we have an opportunity to replace, so.
We've made a number of improvements to the roof over the years. You know, because the alleys come to these scupper boxes, and so we've expanded those as part of our gutter work. And there's a vent system that we're actually going to replace as part of this project that we think will help as well. But it, it's certainly been a troubling roof in terms of just the periodic leaks that we've had. But, but no, no, no roof is perfect. I mean, you know, at this facility, when we have winds out of the north, there, we, we think the building shifts just a little bit and there's one or two spots where we get some water that comes in. At the, the nature center, when we replaced the, the roof with the metal roof, it was about a year of having the contractor come back and chase leaks before we got to the point where we weren't having leaks anymore. So roofs are water, you know, it's, we love it, but it's also challenging, so.
I'll skip my lecture on flat roofs here. I think, to me, that's the, that's the, flat is the worst.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Oh, I do have, I probably have a couple more months to do Blair pictures, so I do have some more to do tonight. I'll zoom in here a little bit. So just kind of starting with kind of the perimeter path. This is looking both to the north, on the western side of the park. So that'd be along Broadway. The contractor's been continuing their work on that perimeter path section. And so they've almost completed all the paving on that western side. And then now the connection paths that are moving up to and around for access to the pavilion. And then this picture is showing the path starting to move around what will be the picnic grove area, where we'll have some picnic tables stationed. And then this path ultimately connects to the system that moves towards the playground, the horseshoe pits, the challenge course, moves in between the two tennis court areas and then connects to the larger path system on the eastern side. And so this is site work on their last long segment of perimeter path along that northern side of the park on Pennsylvania. And so they've been putting their subgrade in and doing compaction there. And I anticipate we might have a completed perimeter path sometime in the next two or three weeks. And I wanted to certainly show the accessible parking area we have along Broadway. This is that parking spot where we received considerable amount of help from UPDAC on the design for this lane to help the unloading of ADA vans and their ramps and helping get people access into our park trail network and then to all the amenities throughout.
Andy, is that going to be a drop-off place only, or will you actually be able to park there?
You can park there. You will be able to park there.
I think that is just so super. Sarah should be so proud.
And then final two pictures are of our accessible horseshoe area on the left. And then another area that's been a big focus in the last week or two, which is for the site work associated with the challenge course. We've actually had our playground equipment and our challenge course equipment delivered last week. So we have all of that ready to go at our Hickory Storage Site. We're waiting on the contractor to kind of finish up their work with the challenge course area, where Keith would then be able to go out and similarly with the playground area, stake out the foundations for the, those play or the challenge course amenities. And then the contractor would be able to lay their drainage in there. And once that's all connected, we'll be ready for Keith to start moving on the installation of both those play areas, which should be coming up sometime in the very near future. And that is all the pictures I have for Blair tonight, but I will have more next month.
Looking good. It's been pretty cute. Oh, no, I'm not going to ask about which is, because you know, you ask and then they happen.
It's been, it's been a pretty good project.
Yeah.
The contractor's been great to work with.
Crystal Lake, anything to focus on that?
I've had some maintenance visits from the landscaping contractor. We had, Stark was onsite at our disposal area in Bucy Woods and they did some cleanup, grading and seeding of that area as well. But for now, primarily it's landscape maintenance stuff.
Do you want to say anything about closing the park for the, or closing the road for the day?
Yes, I will. So, yeah, we've updated before on that open road event at Crystal Lake Park. We've kind of looked at various dates. Right now, we're set on October 3rd, where we'll close the park road to vehicles and only allow pedestrians, bicyclists, any other rollers all through the park for the entire day, which is a Sunday. And then we'll have staff available at two different stations. And it's really to provide opportunities for public information and for input. And so one station's going to focus on the park road itself, where we can provide information on the Millen resurface project that we're anticipating to have go on next spring. But then also receive input on the one-way road concept itself, where we'll have renderings. And after people can test out the road that day, they can come and give us feedback on their thoughts. And that's something that certainly we could look in the future of doing some other closure days. But this day is also focused on, on the public information portion and, and also celebrating everything that's happened at Crystal Lake Park. And so the other station is going to focus on more of that, what's all been happening at Crystal Lake Park. And we'll have renderings and what we call our cut sheets from our Crystal Lake Park master plan update, which then goes through everything we've done recently for park improvements and then kind of some concepts that we have that we could be working on in the future. And similarly, we're providing information on everything that we've done, but we're also going to receive some information, probably targeting some areas in the park, like the Northwoods Pavilion area and what we have, some thoughts there. And then also the area 901 site and get some information on what kind of amenities people would like to see. So staff would probably be available the whole afternoon of that day, but like I said, the park road will be closed the entire day.
Yeah, I was just thinking the last time I drove through there, that how, how important I believe it to be to keep that road open? Because when you think about it, there are very few places here, close by, where you can actually drive through what appears to be woods. I mean, it's a pretty skinny, skinny sliver of wood, but you have that feeling as you're driving through. And it's really quite a glorious thing to be able to do. And really, at any time of the year, it's, it's beautiful in there.
I think when we looked at it, back when we did the 2000, the previous plan for the park, we heard that it was many people's form of recreation. So I think once we saw it in that lens, that it wasn't just traffic clogging the roads, people really enjoying the seasonal aspects we, we committed at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
We're still looking at the multi-use, right?
Yes, of course.
In terms of one, you want, correct, shared, so it's the best. And we're not, absolutely.
It does, because then everyone wins and you can still get that, you know, accessible experience or up-closing personal, so it's all good.
The, the two reference sites we have where they did that, they did see a big surge in, in bike and ped use. The point where they would occasionally close the park road to vehicles, like on the weekends or something like that. So we're, we're really curious to see what the public response is. And we think it'll be a mixed bag. There'll be some people that will just love the concept in entirety. Some people will say, well, let's close it all to vehicles. We want just bikes and peds. And others who say just, just cars. So I think this is, this is a, a good, happy medium. And we have, you know, two reference sites where it's been done successfully. I'm, I'm curious to see, to see how people respond to this open road concept. Cades Cove in Smoky Mountain National Park has been doing it. And they've seen a big surge in bicyclists that come out and ride it when they do. They're doing it pretty frequently. It'll be interesting to see what kind of response we get from this. It'll both help us kind of, you know, raise awareness about our event, but also begin testing that concept as well.
I'm sure, I assume, you know, if we got terrible feedback and nobody wants it, you know, we'd have options still. But I think most people will probably find it very usable and, you know, attractive and practical.
Yeah, if you can have as close to best of both possible worlds, I think that's.
Right. Well, we know it's a commuter route. People living on that edge of town that might work at Carl Campus or University, going through the park is the shortest route.
Is that right?
So there's a lot of people that cut through the park or ride their bikes or, you know.
Oh, yeah, bikes I can see, that's kind of.
Yes.
Obviously, that, that, that one-way conversion, you know, our, our plan currently is that, that happens, you know, pending a lot of public support for the concept, in tandem with the future ITEP Trail Project along Broadway Avenue. And I think Tim probably shared the good news. Heard today that it got awarded in full.
Just miraculous.
And, and that's because Urbana is considered a high-need community. We were, I think, the fourth or fifth highest scoring community on, on that, on that list. Yeah, it's great news for us.
It is, it is.
It brings that possibility sooner. That said, ITEP, as we know, is a multi-year process. And so we'll begin working with our engineer in due course. And there's just a lot that goes through IDOT before we get to the point where we've, we've built the path, but it's, it's great news.
Yeah, but to know that it's there is really, it's such a first big step.
Well, particularly this one, you know, there's not a whole lot of trail mileage, but that bridge, there's the huge cost and just, you know, oh, gotta buy a bridge. And so now we get some help with that. It just mentally feels better, you know, that we'll get that big infrastructure taken care of.
Yeah, that's really terrific. Anything else? We're done?
Unless you have any questions.
Mr. Executive Director?
Sure. Well, let's see. Let's start out, start with our You Belong Here area. Excellent report, lots of really good bits of information in the report. Just really pleased with, with all of that. I always get a lot of joy seeing the Urbana in the pictures. It's just funny, like our Urbana Rotary Club loves Urbana. And so the Crestview event that's coming up August 12th, they were like practically Corky joined us the last meeting and, you know, is, is Urbana going to be there? Who cares about any of us? The van. But they love it. It's created its own identity. Art Fair, excellent event, thanks to all the hard-working staff and people that, you know, volunteered to do that. But I heard all about Urbana. Urbana was there at Kids Arts, you know, it was just, made a big, really big impression. So it's, it's out there, it's bigger than life, and I think people really identify with it. And it's awesome because the idea is when you see it, you should think, oh, fun, love, we're going to have some fun.
It's kind of like the park's ice cream truck.
It is. It's a very good analogy. And so I think it's, people see it and they come running, so we're excited about that.
All right, and that was Carl money that bought, that bought that, so, yeah, we need to, yeah. Is there, is, have we, maybe we should do something?
I think personal letters are always a wonderful thing to show appreciation and, you know, give direct feedback.
Yeah, because it's, who would that inform, is that?
I mean, I always think of Jim Leonard, yeah. I'll send you contact info.
Yeah, that would be good, because it's.
Well, it's good to hear that.
It's a substantial amount of money to, to buy an outfit that, that van. But I think that.
Right.
The benefits.
Right.
Are just mushrooming, and I don't, I don't think you can even, we can even imagine all the A pluses that have come with that.
It has. And picture if we could grab a truck and probably do this thing, same thing out of a truck. But it doesn't have the same feel and it doesn't get people excited and doesn't have the, all the capabilities. So it is, it is noteworthy. So I'll send on info.
That'd be great.
For anybody that would be inclined. Uh, let's see, moving on, lots of other, just also, we had a number of staff reports, public noticing staff doing good things. I always, you know, like to celebrate that because it's other people noticing the hard work of staff, numbers of staff this past month, so very pleased with that. Trying to see here with a little bit of steam in my eyes here. Corky and I attended the, kind of the big first kickoff of the, kind of a group meeting for the Call to Action. That's the university's group. What basically was done is there's university staff and public staff that were assigned to teams, probably six or seven categories, and they were to investigate, basically develop strategies that we'd like to, you know, imply, apply here in Champaign County. Lots of exciting ideas, covered all the, you know, aspects from employment, education, social justice, all those really critical topics. So it was interesting because Chancellor Jones joined us and, you know, everyone's always polite and quiet, you know, when he, when he's there. But kind of went around the first round, but his second round, he, he did ask, you know, this is a lot of work. This is an aggressive, you know, plan. Are we sure we can, you know, you know, tackle all of this? So we have an aggressive plan, you know, it may take more than three years. I think the idea was let's make super impact in the first three years. So it may take a little longer, but I think we have an excellent approach. There's a lot of rich ideas in that. So as we come together, the next thing is the sort of the public kickoff and how do we, you know, get it out in the open? So we anticipate that coming up this fall, so we'll keep you up to date on that. So again, my imagination is, you know, it may not be something that local Urbana park goers are on the tip of their minds or could tell you what all the strategies are. But over time, I think it's really going to bring, you know, our community and the university to better working relations. That can only translate into better outcomes. And I think everybody on the whole group is super committed, so I think we can do those things. So we're very excited. But just keep in mind, there's lots of different groups in town doing similar work. You know, we're doing our own, this group, Call to Action, the Coalition. So I asked Tracy Parsons at our last Coalition meeting, hey, we just had the Call to Action, you know, sort of strategy laid out. Is what they're doing translate over to what we're doing? And I think, you know, the government unit groups see there's a little bit of difference. You know, we'll definitely benefit and participate and be a part of that, but we still have some other really critical, you know, things that we're working on. Which leads you into, obviously, you've been paying attention, the community violence situation is our number one. You know, it's just, it's just not acceptable, you know. The targets are changing, you know, what we heard from law enforcement, you know, old ideas of family and women and children were, you know, sacred or not targets, are now the targets. So we know that a woman, you know, grandmother, 58-year-old woman who was shot and killed through the door at her home, apparently connected to some other thing. And so, you know, it's just really got everybody at their wits' end. And I continue to talk about it because it's the most critical thing facing our community. It's not going to fix itself. It's not going to go away. Time won't pass and things get better. We're going to have to actively work this. So it's really super critical that we stay committed, that we all really double. So it's really super critical that we stay committed, that we all really double down. Um, there's no easy working strategies at hand right now, but we're working on it. I think it's usually the usual long-term strategies for, you know, the younger generation. So we create what I call circuit breaker approaches that interrupt those normal patterns. Anything we can do to work on, you know, local relations, getting people jobs, healthcare, food, housing, you know, those critical, basic life needs. Kind of the middle, the big bulk of it, that that will help us. And then maybe more sophisticated strategies like our Fresh Start. You know, there's been a number of people coming through that program, not a lot of success coming back out. And that's, we, everybody went into it with that understanding. It's not like, you know, camp where you just go and you get a star and everything's good after that. So we've had limited success. So there aren't a whole lot of hardcore strategies, you know, to do. But it's gonna take commitment, the will. There's a working group, I think, that meets once a month. Um, you know, it's a kind of a group of local citizens, pastors and whatever. Tracy's asking for anybody that would wanna help with that. I'm gonna probably join that group just to find out, is there anything else we can be doing? To try to make connections or interrupt that or or, you know. So it's a little hard to talk about. Our last meeting at the Coalition, we couldn't really formulate strategies and approaches easily at the meeting. I think everyone kind of went around the room to share, you know, their perspectives. Um, but we do have a few strategies and we'll keep working on that. I think the larger community coalition group that meets the alternate week, there's a lot of great information, great ideas, and people really work in the community super hard at that. Our staff are involved at that. Um, you know, Elsie and Ashley are there. Um, so I have a lot of hope in that group, because that's probably where the real immediate change will come from. Programs, events, services that are readily available, that people are pitching in and trying to get in place. So that that group is probably gonna lead the way. Um, I think the executive, you know, we're trying to figure out higher strategies, look at funding, you know, how do we tap into other communities that have done some of this? And what can we bring from there to here? But right now, we're pretty frustrated and kind of at a loss. Forty-eight hours apiece that you probably all heard, you know, in the news, that was really a showcase to try to highlight the crisis and get people really, that you can attract. Thinking more on, you know, opportunities to come together in a peaceful way. So I think there's always positives that come with that. As a part of that, I know Corky, Derek and I had a um conference call with, you know, Maurice Hayes. He's the executive director at HVNT. It's on Main Street in Urbana. They do a lot of community works, you know, at the grassroots. And so they've been out and involved in the forty-eight hours apiece, using the parks, doing programs. We wanna start meeting with them and finding out what they need and what they do. Can we partner and start bringing services and activities? We don't have to run them or be the leaders, you know, certainly their group can maintain that. We just wanna make sure the park's ready and, you know, if they're at a site that has a restroom, it's ready to go, or if they need tables or, you know, whatever. So we need to start strategizing, and I think we're all ready, and we had a very good discussion. We're gonna connect again after Labor Day, probably look at fall program opportunities. And then, you know, what I think we're we're trying to do, and I talked to Tracy about is, how do, why don't we get Urbana working on a summer plan for next year? That might be new and different. So working with the city and the school district to look at what can we do to find opportunities for young people? Whether it's jobs, mentoring, service projects, volunteerism, you know, plugging into good things, showing up, helping people where they need help. So that's kind of where we are with that. So it's gonna take a multi-layered, totally committed, everybody pitching, whatever skills. This is not a time to, well, they're doing that, we're mad. We need to all celebrate if success is coming out of that and follow and continue to create our own pathways to bring people together.
Not just one or two things that's gonna fix it.
Right.
I mean, it's a, it's a whole.
Exactly.
It's a, it's a.
Right. So.
Real base, it's a real base fix, and everybody's gonna have to do.
Exactly.
Sort of pick a place to work to make things, to make things better.
And then, you know, you can imagine if it gets complicated, we have our local population, that's primarily the group, but then we have newcomers and, you know, people that moved to the community and people from other countries. And so just managing all those different needs of welcoming and, you know, making sure people have, you know, decent homes and at least places to live and food, you know, those basic services. So, for example, the work Cork and his staff are gonna do at Crestview Park, um, is it Thursday, this Thursday coming up? You know, that's an opportunity to connect with maybe people we don't normally see, a new end road to a neighborhood. You can imagine in a very diverse, I call it, you know, Cottage Grove, Philo Road area, there's a wide variety of business, single-family, multifamily, public housing, senior housing. Daycare, childcare services, all in a very tight proximity. So finding out what's going on, um, who's who's out there and finding ways we can make the park more impactful in our services, you know, right in that neighborhood. So it's literally park to park, where we're gonna have to be out there, meeting people and trying to find out what their needs and start to move toward, how do we meet some of those? You know, needs are the highest priority. So it's a very, I'm seeing a very different service delivery model than when I first started at the Park District. You know, everything's different now and critical needs in the community, so we need a shift with that. So fortunately, we have super staff that's aware of it. They track it. They, they're on top of it. They wanna be a part of it, so they're looking for ways. And so that's why we spend a lot of time working with our groups, the You Belong Here Matrix, super important, you know, group that Elsie leads up, the Coast Group, you know. So there's all these kind of different pieces and parts, and bringing everybody in the know together is probably gonna really help. Takes a lot of effort and coordination. Make a few successes and it's easy to slip, you know, and things would happen or not turn out or a community incident. Um, sort of to, you know, push things back. But we're on it. We wanna keep on it. Any ideas you all have, we're open to. Um, you know, it's something I wanna communicate with UPDAC about, so that they get the full gravity and understand really the critical nature of what we're trying to do. It's, you know, we're well beyond fun and games at the Park District these days. Um, now, having said all that, we still love fun and games. We do a lot of that, and there's still, you know, a need and a place for that. So don't wanna lose all the good that we do in all the other areas, but this is just a really critical need at this time. The hope is things get better, and we'll start to see improvement, the success build on success. And you find out, try to work your way back into another place in your community. Um, and that's what probably many cities in the US are doing right now. It's not just Urbana or Champaign, you know, it's around the country. So there's a lot of reasons, so, but focusing locally and making sure we're taking care of our folks, you know, here is probably good work to do. So I just wanted to spend a little time talking about that.
I think there are a lot of people out there in in the community who just need a way in to help with the situation. They're, they're, you know, it's, it's, it's a small group of people who are causing all the, all the problem. They're, the majority of folks aren't happy.
Right.
Aren't happy with it, and we just need to find a way so that we can all work together.
Right.
Yep.
I think we're hearing from, you know, the cities, yeah, the residents are, they're getting angry. They're tired of it, you know, they don't wanna live in fear. And everyone, anyone, every, so it's not something people embrace. So I think a little bit of strategy savvy and pushback is probably in order, if you know what I mean. Not taking it, standing up and saying, we can do better, we demand better, um, is is what I recommend. But doing it carefully and, you know, at the right time, and so it's impactful. Um, that's probably the hard part. So moving along, um, let's see another uh update, health and wellness. Um, Cedric and I met with a wonderful artist, Langston Alston, last night, had coffee. And I think the idea is, could we connect, try to get some art lined up for health and wellness? I took the vision book. We shared it. He was very interested. I think he committed, said he's very interested. Um, so, you know, we talked indoor and outdoor. Certainly, there's potential, but I just said, there's a lot of canvas indoor. Um, you know, that's where people spend a lot of their time. Um, so we hope, once we get Farnsworth Group working, you know, a little bit tighter on some of the plans, we know what spatial that we can count on. We're gonna get back with them and sit down and start going over and talking about how do we do this? His art style, it's really wonderful. Um, we'll show some images later. But, you know, it's a stylized, really interesting stylized, focus on African-American. He does other types of art too. But it would be a fantastic addition to this facility.
Yeah.
Can't imagine, I don't think we saw anything like that in any of our visits. So here's a chance for us to really differentiate ourselves from all the other places we visited.
Well, this is something we talked about several years ago when I I introduced that student who had this idea to partner with Urbana High School.
Yep.
Because she had grown up in the Pilsen neighborhood of Chicago, and there was lots of representation.
Right.
There's just a bunch of white walls in schools.
Yep.
So this is, sounds great, and I'm familiar with his work, and I think that's great.
Well, you know, we knew about it. Cedric talked about it. We knew about it. You had mentioned. And so we just, we're moving there. We're just going there.
Fantastic.
Without, you know, there's other people you could consider, but who can do the kind of work and make the impact we need? I'd say this is the person, so.
And he's originally from Champaign-Urbana, right?
Cedric, do you wanna give some background on?
Uh, yeah.
Connection to?
Um, I mean, I I know him through um my local, my friends in Urbana. Um, but he, he, I think he graduated from Champaign. Um, he currently lives in New Orleans. Um, but also kind of commutes between New Orleans and here and Chicago. Um, he said he was just finishing up, so he he had just come down from Chicago, he was finishing up a project at, like, I think, a Facebook campus in Chicago. Um, but ever since I've seen his work in downtown Urbana, uh, it's like on the backside of the, that coffee place. Uh, it has a weird name. It's a pizza place, used to be.
Coffee.
Yeah, yeah, Cafeteria Co.
Yes, Cafeteria Co. So in the alleyway, in the back of Cafeteria Co., he's done the whole mural on the back. Uh, he's done a few other murals in town as well, I think, uh, uh, maybe on Neal Street. Um, but his work's really fantastic, very unique, um, and I'm like really excited for the opportunity to to get him involved in this project. Um, he seemed very excited about it as well.
Yes.
Mm hmm. I was very impressed, just so you know. And, you know, I kind of expected, thanks, you know, I'll give it some thought. But he was drawn to it, looking at the images, talking about, you know, relatable experiences. He knew the neighborhood where this facility's gonna go and thought that was a terrific move. So I think things are starting to line up in a really positive way. And we'll find resource to make it happen. I just think it's that important, you know. I mean, thinking back, remember when we started initiate some of our early DEI stuff, you know, the idea of cultural competency and how does your community identify? And walking into a building that says something or means something to a lot of different people would be really fantastic.
Absolutely.
And often, we don't take the time and extra money or effort to do that, you know. So I think this is a real opportunity, so we're excited. Share.
I think that we grabbed him at the right time as well.
Yeah.
Just because he said that he's, I think he he's becoming more popular.
Mm hmm.
And so his, he said he's scheduling things farther and farther out at this point. So I think that, you know, if we had waited until the the building was, you know, under, already under construction, we might not be able to.
Right.
Have the opportunity to work with him, so.
Help it better.
It's really fantastic.
It is. So we're excited, and I'd say, once we get some, you know, better drawings, that's the time to start moving back and just talking, you know, how do we develop this? How are the ideas? And he was really excited about putting some ideas together and, you know, really analyzing and thinking about the project. So I'm very excited. Um, this'll be really neat if things come together. All right, moving ahead, Derek and I had a very good discussion, Zoom uh call, I think it was Zoom, with Clark Lindsay. Um, as I think I reported last month, they're expanding. And so obviously, with Meadowbrook next door, while we support that and been great neighbors, we have concerns always, how's it gonna look? What are visitors gonna see or think or experience? So it gave us a chance to talk about some things we've noticed for a while, noises coming from some of the local buildings, just some of the development. How do we think about screening our views and accentuating um that? And so I think we're gonna meet with our team at the site and walk the edges, or at least the site, and talk about, you know, what's gonna happen. Primarily the area, I call it our our west, long west side of the park where the villas are, they're gonna be adding more. So, you know, it'll look different than it than it does now. But I think if we can, you know, work, have them work with our site in mind, we can do it nicely. And certainly, you can do a lot with more landscape, you know, if if we need that on our side. So I think things will come together. I think there's opportunities, you know, we should encourage them to think about adding art to their campus that might benefit park users and blend our sites together. That's one, you know, thought. Obviously, we like that. And, you know, I think it'd be nice, but it'd be, so we wanna talk to them about those things, you know. What can you do to encourage the community to love this development, you know, and make it fit and look like it's a natural um on the site?
Don't we have an in at the landscaper there?
I think we know somebody there. So we'll be getting together with them and talking what we can do there.
Tim, one of the things I've noticed is the noise pollution from the uh, from the air conditioning units on the greenhouses.
Sure.
Once you get hit, what really, uh, while you're still in the wildflower walk, walking west, it just overpowers any natural sounds that you hear. I don't know what can be done about that, but it really is.
See what we can do. Um, you know.
You wouldn't think that, it wouldn't, it shouldn't be those, that big a unit, those big units that are out to be making that much noise, you'd think, right?
Yeah, I don't know, but they make a lot of noise.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, when, you know, I know Derek and I talked about it, and, you know, we we knew it was true, but since Derek's moved to the house, he's confirmed. Yeah, you hear it. So, you know, I think you have, we have to be concerned.
I've always been clear, like, I, it's not about me, but I'm thinking about all the patrons.
Right.
We have our.
Gardeners, yeah.
Gardeners and.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the gardeners are really close.
But it's, it, they, they cycle on and off constantly.
Yeah. And with this really, like, thi- this morning, the uh, this morning, the uh, due point was close to eighty, so. It was running.
Right.
All day.
Mm hmm.
Running all day today.
Yep.
So we could get, I mean, so geotherm, geothermal's a good answer.
Well, you know, they're individual buildings, so the individual units probably go with the buildings. Maybe their main campus, you know, that might be an option, but I'm not really sure. But we'll, we'll find out. I think the first thing is identify all the issues. And so they're clear and they understand what we're talking about, and, you know, we can take them out so they can see it or hear it or experience it. And then I think we can work towards resolutions, you know, that would be at least, you know, we're trying to be realistic, you know. It's not, probably gonna be like if Clark Lindsay was not there and just lifted off the ground. But how can we create, you know, an atmosphere that really benefits the park? You know, 'cause if you're in your unit and you can't hear those units outside the window, but everyone in the park, you know, sure can. So so there's, there's a responsibility, I'd say, that that we need to work with them on.
And does the city, is it the city that has the geothermal sort of program? So maybe they could be participants?
We'll find out. I don't, we didn't really talk about their, you know, specific details on.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking that that might be.
Opportunities, yeah.
A way to have a carrot or some sort of financial incentive or something that might make it easier for them to consider something that.
Right.
Might not otherwise.
No, I, I, you can always sense when they talk with us, they're, you know, they're handling with kid clubs, you know, the park issue. So that's good, you know, I think people respect that. I I don't necessarily think every project, we've worked on at other parks, you know, we've had that level of respect. Um, so we do appreciate it, and I think, you know, they're, they, they want the park to work and be successful, because most of their success.
Is based.
Yeah, is based on the park or the adjacency.
Co-location.
Once you move there, what are you gonna do? Oh, there's an amazing park right there that you can do everything you wanna do. So it's, it's a good relationship. One thing we offered them is, you know, our Ray Street parking lot, you know, they're, they're tight on parking there. So just suggested if there's any way you could blend those together on your site and create more parking that we could benefit from on a shared approach would be a real benefit. So they, they're probably gonna look at that. I don't know how feasible that idea is, you know. It's just trying to look for ways to, you know, we know parking's in shortage, so if we could increase that. But we know they're tight as well, and if we could find a way to get it mutually beneficial, and they were willing to help, you know, support the cost, then that really is a good advantage for us. But we'll, we'll look at everything we can do and see how much we can bring back to the park and make it whole. So I think that's, that's where we're headed. Moving on, Corky and I had a very good, really meaningful, important meeting with the interim director at the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Lily Walton is her name. Um, just full of energy, she's got a lot of good ideas. They have some interesting programs. We went there to, one, meet leadership, two, find out what do they do? How could we serve them? You know, what are their needs? Where do they have, you know, issues to add that they, we might be of help? What is their youth approach? So we had a very, very good discussion. I think Corky suggested a few tie-ins, opportunities we could start working together. And they have a youth volunteer corps that they send out to do jobs. I think if we could create opportunities, not so much, here's our work list we have to get done, that we should hire somebody to do. But giving people experience to connect and get a little bit of work experience or something they could put on a, you know, if they're interviewing for a job, you know, working with youth. So even if it's cleanup or, you know, restoration, whatever. So finding opportunities for, that's what I'm, we, it's easy to say no, 'cause it's hard sometimes. And you don't really want a bunch of experienced people going through a high-quality area, grabbing and ripping and, you know. But finding ways to say yes to that and give people that connection. And who knows, maybe they could be future employees, interns. Um, so that's the kind of thought, you know, we'd like to see there.
I was talking to Jennifer at the pool the other day, and evidently they have a program in Grand Pool, do you know about, about that? They've got.
I think so.
Um, a s- a small group of kids that are set to work a certain number of hours and a certain number of weeks. And they get paid at the end, if they've completed it all, it's all, it's all.
Yeah, I've heard of programs like that.
I mean, and this is, uh, could easily be a similar, a similar sort of thing. I mean, and this is, could easily be a similar, a similar sort of thing. And
Yep.
She said that the, that the reception these kids have been getting in Rantoul was fabulous and, um, somebody bought them all ice cream cones and then somebody else bought them all, you know, they all had pizza for lunch and.
Right.
You know, they can be a part of the community in ways that they, they wouldn't otherwise be. And, and they're young.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's a good first job experience. It's, and it's just, it just seems to me like a triple win kind of situation.
We agree. We had another great meeting. Corky and I met with the new principal at Urbana High School. Taryn Nance is his name, super awesome person. We, same mission, walked in, here's what we're doing, wanna make connections, but the message was a little different. How do we start maybe working with students that are not college-bound, but creating local opportunities for job shadowing, mentorship, internships? You know, we have a pool right on their campus. How do we get people coming over to learn how to guard, how to learn maintenance, maybe some landscape, you know, work? He's very excited about that. So he immediately is setting up teachers to meet with us, I think the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yep.
Twenty-sixth.
That's great.
So we'll likely meet at maybe the Nature Center at Phillips and, you know, meet with their Cork. 'Cause part of our challenge is, who do we go to? Who do we, I need to know who.
Yeah.
Corky's staff needs to know and Derek's needs to know, you know, if we did have a thing, who do I call? How do I get it to happen? You know, and so we need some partnership there to say yes and make those, so that we're not figuring it out, finding it out, paying for it, managing it, transporting.
Right.
You know, then it, okay, it's starting to get hard now to maintain and sustain that, so.
And it works better when you've got two people, two groups working together to sort it.
So hopefully we're seeing linkages to this discussion, to the just previous discussion. How do we make inroads and make connections and, you know, find ways and places? Um, so you really have to just start working at all and hope, look for opportunities and see where things could start to come together to make improvements there. So we're excited about that and what can come about that. Let's see, I think moving along, um, I think I covered those things. Um, UPDAC celebration is coming up, August twenty-fourth, so certainly we look forward to that. We'll have the celebration and then our kickoff meeting with the new UPDAC joining us, so we're excited about that.
Is, is that also the pic, is that the picnic?
Yes. So at five o'clock, we're gathering social and then dinner, um, words at five-thirty and then dinner to follow. So, and the words will be brief. I think we're, I think I have just some, you know, background in it. But the goal is bring people together, get people visiting, maybe sharing what they've worked on with UPDAC and, um, things like that. So we'll continue with that. And then lastly, September study session. Um, I talked just briefly with staff, we have a lot of kind of new and many different things. And I thought, what if we kind of bring all the new things together? I think we'll review the IGA for, uh, the KRT, which will be on the September regular agenda. I think we'll hopefully have it ready for the Forest Preserve and Vermillion County Conservation District. Um, but maybe we can share some of these ideas of the Crystal Lake, you know, the perspectives we have and some of the images, and we've got some logoing messaging. So kind of just what's new at, at the Park District. We're working, 'cause I think it showcases a lot of the creative work staff is doing and it's pretty exciting stuff. So that's all I had. Can answer any questions about that or anything else?
All right, the president can't speak 'cause hopefully he's asleep. Give me back the twenty-fifth. All right, so now we have our liaison reports. Roger, you.
Yeah, as, as far as the study group, we really kind of mostly brought Michael up to speed on the stuff that we had talked about in the, in the, in our study session. Um, talked about the fund balance, which looked good, Katie was pleased with that. And, uh, talking about whether or not we're going to enter the 2021 Oslad cycle considering everything else that we have going on. So that's what we talked about. And Michael was fine with it, so that was, that was good.
All right, Mary?
Um. Yeah, we have not met. We're working on trying to find new dates to meet for the future.
All right, Roger?
Um, at the foundation, Fred ordered all the members of the board to raise ten thousand dollars. Actually, he used the word. I think the word was challenge. And then he promptly announced that he was stepping down as president, so, you know, I thought that was a clever, clever, uh, clever strategy there. Megan Pusey will be, will be coming on as, as president of, of, of the board. It was stressed that we can invite people to the pre-Jazz Walk event, particularly if you know anybody that you think, uh, might be interested in contributing to the, to the district, particularly health and wel- wellness. It's a public event, so please feel free to, um, to, to invite them. And then there is a group, Nancy Schrumpf is, is the, a person that's kind of involved in that, that's raising money to try to redo, what, four tennis courts? Uh, and, uh, they've, they've raised, uh, probably close to a third of what their goal is. Uh, where, where they'll go from there, I'm, I'm not sure, but, uh, so that was it.
Okay. What have we done?
Nothing.
Nothing. All right, we're having the fiftieth anniversary.
Wait, we are.
On August twenty-fourth.
Yeah. That's not nothing.
That is not, except for than I have personally not.
Yes.
Yes, not done a whole lot. But I think, I mean, UPDAC is, UPDAC is good, good to go for, what, probably the next six months, right? Isn't that what we figured? And it's, um, I, I'd like to say a special thank you to three former, or actually current, um, members who have agreed to serve another year.
Yes.
To fill in some, some missing slots. So that's, that will be, that will be a real help. And speaking of UPDAC, would you like to introduce yourself? Tell us who you are.
I'm David Dormand. I didn't think I was gonna be able to come tonight, but had another event canceled, so. Um, I'm just trying to get more familiar with, um, how things, uh, run and what the issues are and, you know, just get familiar with, with Urbana Park District. And I'm, I'm a retired librarian. And I've been in Urbana now for about, oh, five years and then about twenty years prior to coming to Urbana, uh, my wife and I lived in Urbana for seven years, seven or eight years. And then we moved away and then we retired and came back.
Phil, it'd be wonderful to have you on UPDAC.
Well, you're fine.
Everyone who shows your heightened sense of interest in, in what we do. I've been too off-putting. I see, he was at the study session, so, yeah, we're, we're glad, we're glad that, we're glad to have you. It's always, it's always good to find people who are interested in.
Thank you.
Inner working with the, the Park District. All right, old business. I don't have any old business. And we've taken care of our new business. Are we gonna take anything off the consent agenda? Anybody have anything to say? Going, going?
I have a question. Uh, Derek, I noticed that, um, that position number one is, is going from, from Meadowbrook. That leaves us two kind of open, uh, niche areas. Are we planning on filling those?
We are.
Okay.
Yep. So we've got, uh, the artist that has the same piece that's, uh, near the farmhouse to the south, as well as the one that's at Leo Park is a piece that we didn't do before in those areas.
Okay.
And the other one is.
Let's see, we've, um, Dream Traveler is Jackie Willis, um, her, one of her large pieces will be coming. And then Nicole Beck, we have one of her pieces called Oscillate that'll be coming. And a piece is also leaving on, in September, early September, which will free up another spot. So we're trying to fill spots and still anticipate our planning for the twenty-fifth anniversary, which is kind of the big, you know, the bigger event coming up.
Yeah.
So we're kind of just filling, you know, we want to keep interest, fill some things in, but then the arts and culture team is sort of moving into the planning for, you know, the tw- the twenty-fifth anniversary.
That's, that's the nice thing about the Sculpture Garden is they have things coming and going, so.
Right.
You haven't been there for a while and you could.
Keep it fresh.
Yes, or you could, we, 'cause your favorite one is.
We, and we occasionally hear that.
Space that was vacated by here and there is the one where Fisher's piece will go. He tends to have larger pieces than Jackie's piece. And she's the same artist who had the piece that was at Phillips.
Right.
One that's gonna go into where position one, uh, is, is moving away from. And position one will be from the new permanent piece at Phillips.
Thanks.
It's, under my report, I did leave off one thing.
Yeah.
Can we do, have time to go back? I was gonna ask Corky to talk about Crystal Lake Pool.
I was gonna ask if I could.
And I forgot, I have my cryptic little note and I passed over it.
I was gonna ask if I could just give you an update. We've got a, you, Nancy, you've probably received it through the Pool Pass membership or your classes.
I sent it on Corky though.
Yeah, we got it.
Everybody got it, okay, good. So I want to, um, you know, as the note says, the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth slides will be closed at Crystal Lake. The rest of the features will be open, the pools will be open. Um, and then the eighteenth is the first day of school. We won't be open on that day. And then our next problem days are the last three Fridays.
Yeah.
Um, so the twentieth, twenty-seventh, and third. Um, we always have a hard time with staffing, um, this time of year, as kids are going, we've, we've got a really young staff, um, which is good for the future. You know, we hope. Um, but with that comes school, school sports, um, school activities, parents not wanting their kids to work while they're supposed to be learning. So, um, I just wanted to report on that. We've been talking about it all year, how we were short-staffed. I'm very proud that, um, we've been able to do what we've been able to do. So far, we've not had to close the pools. Um, I have heard that our, um, counterparts across town are closing, except for on the weekends, starting when school starts. So, um, the aquatic staff have done a great job of, you know, maintaining the guards we do have, but we are losing a substantial amount here in the next week or two. So, um, again, closing was a lo- our last resort, but there are days that we are gonna have to do that that are listed already that we know. And I just want it to be clear, just in case you guys get messages, if, if a guard calls up and, and can't come in, um, we may have to close that day too. I mean, we're, we're very thin with staff. We're not thin to a point where we're not safe, but if we lose a guard, then we are not safe and that's when we'll end up closing.
Or we'll see Leslie with a whistle.
What's that?
Or we'll see Leslie with a whistle.
Uh, you'll see them with a whistle anyhow.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
That's how thin we are.
Ooh, wow. Well, I'll tell you, the water aerobics ladies will be happy because generally they close the drop slide when we get into the water. And the kids who have been in there do not want to get out. And frequently, we're the recipient of death stares from all the chairs around the pool 'cause they're looking and where's the clock and what time it is and when are these old ladies gonna get out of the water? So it's not to have those death stares from the kids.
The only other note I had, just, I reported last month that, you know, our numbers were down from two thousand nineteen. Um, in nineteen, we were right around forty-three thousand. Now we're right around thirty thousand for this year, so we're about two-thirds of what we had in nineteen, which.
That's pretty good, I think.
That's me too.
Based on the environment, I think we've done pretty well.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We've also, before we met last month, we had, what, a couple of weeks of no sun. It was raining and.
Yeah.
Um, today it was too hot. Believe it or not, we weren't that busy today because that must have been too hot for everybody, but.
It was a hundred and eight.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Um, today, um, if you looked at Facebook or anything, you might have seen that we did, uh, water breaks, safety breaks. Um, that's something, we used to always do it, but then it's.
Oh, yeah.
Also one of those things where if you do them, you know, people go home and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want that. But as hot as it was today, um, we definitely wanted to make sure our staff were getting the breaks they needed, that we were clearing the pool and making sure everybody was safe and, you know, just making sure we stayed on top of our game, so.
I think that was a good, a good call.
Probably from what I understand, tomorrow's gonna be same temperature-wise, I think.
Except it's not.
A little cooler, but.
Yeah. So we'll see if we have to do that tomorrow. It's not a common practice. It's just something we did for an extra safety measure, so.
Always better to be in.
The nice thing is you'll, you may get severe thunderstorms instead, so, you know, that'll, that'll be good.
If then the old ladies in the water roast, that's what we.
They won't be happy with that.
One thing or another. But I think, I think on the whole, all, the Park District has done a really superb job of rising to the challenges.
Think so too.
I mean, and the summer is, you know, it's, it, it, for everybody else, it's our busy season.
Yeah.
Right.
It's been just a challenge to know what and where and when and how, and then how it changes and where it changes. And, yeah, I think it hasn't been just a fabulous job.
Thank you.
And I know it hasn't been easy.
That's all I had. Corky, was that all you had?
I'm good.
Yep.
All right, that's it, we're done.
Right.
Goodnight.
All right, folks, sounds good.